All right, ladies and gentlemen, thank you everybody for being here tonight. We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. It is six o'clock on the dots. We will go ahead and get started. Before we do, if I would, excuse me, if I may, remind everybody to silence your mobile devices. We've got a lot of new business and swearing in of new commissioners, election of mayor, pro temp, and sure there'll be some videography and pictures taken and all that kind of stuff. I want to pay respect to all our incoming and outgoing elected officials, and it's a special night for everybody, so let's silence our cell phones and make sure we give the evening the respect that it deserves. I appreciate it. Mr. Mayor, whenever you're ready.
Mayor Holland?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Messer?
Here.
Commissioner Finch?
Here.
Commissioner Normile?
Here.
Commissioner Taylor?
Here.
Commissioner Vogel?
Commissioner Vogel is on.
May I make a motion to excuse all Commissioner Vogel?
All right, motion is on the floor. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion is carried. We'll wish Jamie and her family the best, since she wasn't able to be here tonight. All right, to lead us in our opening prayer, I'd like to welcome up Cape Codderet Mayor Will Baker. If you would, please join us at the podium, please, sir.
Please may he as, ladies and gentlemen. Dear Lord, thank you for your opportunity for us to gather here. Thanks, everybody, for being here this evening to watch what we do in our country, which is one of the best things in the world, which is to have the transfer of our government. God, please look after all those that are here. Please make sure that everybody who is elected looks after the best interest of town, does what the best of their ability, and may we all be better people as a result. Thank you, Lord, in Jesus' name we pray.
Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Will. Please stand and face the flag with me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, item number six would be the adoption of the agenda. Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion is carried. Item number six would be the consent agenda. Is there a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion is carried. All right, item number seven, a big one, would be the installation of the new town commissioners. Again, congratulations to all four of you. I look forward to working with you. With that, I'll invite Judge Andy Wigmore up to the podium to take care of that business for us. Take your time, sir. Thanks for coming. Sarah's going to make sure you have a mic up there, and you can do that at the podium or here up front, whichever you guys prefer.
So we're going to go alphabetically down the list?
And Judge, if you will, just those mics, if you hold them up really close, everybody listening out at home can hear us too as well.
All right. Thank you all for letting me come do this tonight, the new commissioners. Just wanted to say a couple of things first. I mean, this is like my home for a long time. I grew up in Jacksonville, but started surfing here in 1969 at the Point, and that's where I met Dud under the pier, probably early, early 70s. And as soon as I got done with law school, moved here permanently. So this is, was home away from home before I moved here permanently, and been here since the early 90s permanently, and I can't say how excited I am and happy I am with this group that's getting sworn in tonight, and then a lifelong friend, Dud Brownlow's one of those that's getting sworn in. Let's start with you, Dud, since we're doing it alphabetically. If you want to come up, bring your family. We've got the Bible. If I can, I just broke these down so I can... Whichever... Where you want everybody at? Okay. Okay. All right, so we're going to go through this, and I've broken it up, so you don't have to remember a whole lot. Okay, aye, state your name.
I, Roy Dudley Brownlow.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States?
I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina?
The Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith?
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will fully discharge the duties of my office?
And I will fully discharge the duties of my office.
As a commissioner for the town of Emerald Isle, North Carolina?
As a commissioner for the town of Emerald Isle, North Carolina.
And that I will not allow my action as a commissioner?
I will not allow my action as a commissioner.
To be influenced by personal or political friendships or obligations?
To be influenced by, is that political?
Personal or political friendships or obligations? So help me God. Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
All right, next in the alphabet is Alicia Sanderson.
Roy, I'm sorry, I used to call you Dud. Got a seat up front for you here, sir.
And while Alicia's making her way up, just one of the things I wanted to say, too, is just, it's incredible, we have a retired CAMA person in Dud that's going to get on the board and be able to help with all that stormwater issues. We've got Alicia Sanderson, been here forever with the rec department, and is going to help with that. We've got Josh Sawyer, small business owner in the town, his family's got a lot of the food places here. We need that small business with the board. And then we've got Jay, our numbers guy, who's an accountant and going to be able to help us with all the budget and the numbers. So I think we've got some board members that can be very active in making this town great. Are you ready? Okay, aye?
Aye, Alicia Sanderson.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States?
That I will support and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina?
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith?
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office?
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office.
As a commissioner for the town of Emerald Isle, North Carolina?
As a commissioner for the town of Emerald Isle, North Carolina.
And that I will not allow my acts as a commissioner?
And I will not allow my acts as a commissioner.
To be influenced by personal or political friendships or obligations?
To be influenced by personal friendships or obligations.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Got your family up here, just holding the Bible. All right, ready?
Yes, sir.
Be able to see what I'm reading. All right, aye?
Josh Sawyer.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States?
That I will support and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina?
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith?
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office?
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office.
As a commissioner for the town of Emerald Isle, North Carolina?
As a commissioner for the town of Emerald Isle, North Carolina.
That I will not allow my actions as a commissioner?
That I will not allow my actions as a commissioner.
To be influenced by personal or political friendships or obligations?
To not be influenced by personal commitments, friendships, or obligations.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Jay?
Congratulations, sir.
He's going to hold for you. All right, aye?
Aye.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States?
That I will support and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina?
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith?
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office?
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office.
As a commissioner for the town of Emerald Isle, North Carolina?
As a commissioner for the town of Emerald Isle, North Carolina.
And that I will not allow my actions as a commissioner?
And I will not allow my actions as a commissioner.
To be influenced by personal or political friendships or obligations?
To be influenced by personal or political friendships or obligations.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Saved you a seat as well, Jay.
Congratulations, Jay.
Congratulations, sir.
business would be the election of a mayor pro temp. Judge Wigmore, if you would, just stay close by for us. Ms. Qua Obama, understand that the new board will now make a motion to appoint the new mayor pro temp, correct?
Yes, sir.
Let's hot your mic there. There we go.
Thank you. Should open the floor, make a motion to open the floor for nominations, accept all nominations with a vote on those nominations, and then a roll call vote for the nominees if there are more than one.
All right, well, I'll let you lead us on all of that. That's a new one to me. I was here for it once, but I was on the other side, so...
Yes, sir. Okay, this time, it would be appropriate to entertain a motion to open the floor for nominations for the position of mayor pro temp?
Is there a motion?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion is carried.
Are there any nominations? I have a nomination.
All right.
Mayor Holland, I nominate Mark Taylor as the senior representative on this council as mayor pro temp.
All right, that motion is on the floor. All in favor?
Well...
Oh, sorry.
Mr. Mayor, you may want to...
Oh, okay, any more nominations? Okay, all right, I'm sorry.
I would like to make a nomination based on the custom of nominating the highest vote getter, and given that I hadn't had a chance to talk with Commissioners Taylor or Sanderson yet, again, based on the tradition, I'd nominate Roy Brownlow.
All right, so we have two nominations, Mr. Brownlow and Mr. Taylor. Are there any more nominations? All right, we have two nominations. How should we proceed?
At this point, Mr. Mayor, it would be appropriate to entertain a motion to close the nominations.
All right, is there a motion to close the nominations?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that motion is carried.
At this point, Mr. Mayor, it would be appropriate to ask the clerk to call a roll call vote, and when each commissioner's name is mentioned, or called, rather, please indicate your vote for either Commissioner Taylor or Commissioner Brownlow.
Okay. Sarah, when you're ready.
Commissioner Taylor?
And at this time, you would vote either for yourself or Mr. Brownlow? Commissioner Brownlow.
All right, I'll vote for myself.
Commissioner Wooten?
Mr. Brownlow.
Mayor Holland?
I don't believe I vote.
Commissioner Brownlow?
I vote for myself, or now, or...
Yourself, okay. Commissioner Sawyer?
Commissioner Taylor.
Commissioner Sanderson?
Commissioner Taylor.
Commissioner Taylor's the winner.
All right, by a vote of three to...
To two.
Commissioner Taylor will be elected our mayor pro temp. Congratulations, sir. And I believe we have Judge Wigmore to recite that oath as well. Mark, you're up, sir.
Do you need the Bible? Do you have anybody you want to have hold it for you? Okay, you're going to hold it? Okay. All right, aye?
Aye.
Do solemnly swear that?
Do solemnly swear that.
I will support and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States?
I will support and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina?
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith?
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office?
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office.
As a mayor pro temp for the town of Emerald Isle, North Carolina?
As a mayor pro temp of the town of Emerald Isle, North Carolina.
And that I will not allow my actions as a mayor pro temp?
I will not allow my actions as a mayor pro temp.
To be influenced by personal or political friendships or obligations?
To be influenced by personal, political friendships or obligations.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Item number nine on the agenda would be the recognition of our outgoing commissioners, Finch, Messer, Normile, and Vogel. Do we have, I know we have something for Jamie that she wouldn't have...
Yeah, we do, but with her absence, we do have a resolution.
Okay, I'd like to read that. Jamie wasn't able to be here tonight. I'd like to read that. It's well-earned, well-deserved. If I could have that, please?
All right, again, we're sorry that Commissioner Vogel could not be here tonight handling family business, and we can all understand that family is always first, but her two years of service to the town is much appreciated by me and I'm sure all of you in the room, and I'm grateful for her service to the town and wish her all the best in whatever is next for her. That being said, the town of Emerald Isle proudly presents this certificate of appreciation to Jamie Vogel in sincere recognition of your tireless dedication and leadership serving the town of Emerald Isle from November 2021 to November 2023, Commissioner for the town of Emerald Isle, presented in great appreciation for your dedication and loyalty in the serving the citizens of this town and your foresight in planning for the future while preserving our past, presented this 12th day of December 2022 to Jamie Vogel. Thank you, ma'am, and have a great day.
All right, at this time, we're going to take a very short, well, not very short, but a short break there for some refreshments, and congratulations, I believe they're all in order, and congratulations to all of our new elected officials. It's a big step to put yourself out there and make the sacrifice to serve your town and everybody in it. I wish you all the best, and I offer anything that I can do to help you along the way. I'll be here for you. And I also want to, once more, recognize Commissioners Finch, Messer, Normile, and Vogel. Thank you all for what you've done for our town. Thank you for the leadership and guidance that you've shown me. I've learned so much in a short period of time. I'm grateful to have served with you all, and I wish you all the best in whatever is in your future as well. Thank you all very much. All right, we'll take a few minutes for high fives and handshakes, and then we'll resume with our new business.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to get everyone's signatures.
Yes, oh, yeah, our newly elected, we've got some paperwork up by the clerk's desk, if you would, a couple of signatures, no big deal. Thank you.
I've got some questions to ask.
All right, all right. Back to business here. Item number 11 will be proclamations and public announcements. We have no proclamation, so we will roll our public announcements.
Now it's time for the public announcements. The next coffee with a cop will be held on December 14th from 9:00 to 10:00 a.m. in the town boardroom. There will be a blood drive on December 15th from 1:00 to 5:30 p.m. at the Emerald Isle Community Center. The next golf cart advisory committee will take place on December 19th from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. in the town boardroom. The Emerald Isle administrative offices will be closed December 25th through the 27th for Christmas and January the 1st for New Year's Day. The community center will be closing at 12:30 p.m. on December 23rd and will be closed on December 25th for Christmas and January 1st for New Year's Day. The next neighborhood watch meeting happens on January 2nd in the town boardroom at 4:00 Ready to turn your love for the sea into the coolest job ever? Well, we have great news. Emerald Isle is calling, and we've got an opportunity for you. We're on the lookout for the next generation of lifeguard heroes. Picture yourself with the sand beneath your feet, the sun on your face, and the thrill of making a real difference every single day. You'll get paid while we train you in the skills that matter: CPR, first aid, open water ocean rescue, surf rescue, water entry techniques, jet ski operations, beach driving, and top-notch communication. Yes, you heard it right. Get paid while you train. Jet ski operations and beach driving are all part of the job. Earn between $15 to $16 per hour while protecting our beaches and enjoying the best office view in the world. But it's not just a job, it's a family. Join a team that's not just colleagues, but friends, supporting each other, having fun, and making a difference together. If you are ready to embark on a life-saving adventure, click the link below to apply now and start your journey to becoming an Emerald Isle lifeguard, where every wave is a new adventure and every day is a chance to be a hero. Apply now and let the ocean be your office. And the next board of commissioners meeting takes place on January 9th at 6:00 p.m. in the town boardroom.
All right, thank you for that. Item number 12 is in regards to a commercial site plan on Boganlet Drive. Mike Stanley of Boganlet Pier and Josh Johnson of Stroud Engineering have presented the town with a request for redesigning the entrance into Boganlet Pier. So, Mr. Johnson, you're here with us tonight, I understand, is that correct? Yes, sir. If you would, please, I'll have you, you and/or Mike up to the podium to elaborate on the site plan a little bit more. Just hold it up real close there, I think it's not terribly... Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Well, first of all, congratulations to all of you. It's good to see some smiling faces up here, and hopefully you'll be smiling before the next election. We'll see how it works. My name is Mike Stanley. I'm owner of Boganlet Pier. Our family's had it for 51 years, and, well, it's been a long run, that's for sure, and it looks like it's going to be many, many more years. We had it for sale for a bit, but we've finally decided we're just going to die there, so just to let you all know that I'm going to be there for a long time. This isn't some short-term thing. Well, over the years, of course, everything's changed so much, and our island is not our little quaint island anymore, and we realize that, and it's growing, and it has to grow. It's just part of the natural progression. We understand that. I do want to say that my wife, Shirley, looked at me about two months ago in the parking lot, about three months ago in the parking lot, and she looked at me, and she said, "I'm not doing this anymore." And that meant that she was not going to stand there being the meter maid at the parking pit. And I told her, I said, "Well, I understand, because you are serious about this, but it's really time to move ahead and to do something a little more automated and just become part of the system that's so rapidly growing in Emerald Isle itself." Our business has exploded. We have gotten... Our expectations are so well exceeded. You know, it's amazing, you work for 50 years, and you, all you do is try and try and try to make business better and better and better, and all of a sudden, you hit that point where you're past that, and you're realizing, wait a minute, oh, wait a minute, I did too good a job here, and it's getting too busy, and there's too much going on. Well, that's where we're at, and that's kind of where we're, why we decided to go to an automated system and try to, try to bring it around to a, to a more reasonable outcome for us. We've studied a few parking systems, and we came up with a, our best system that works for us is a gated system. We feel like with our clientele, I'm not chasing people down the street for my money, I'm just going to just get it paid right there, and we can move it right along. So we decided to use a system similar to, or identical to, the New Bern Airport. It's called Parking Box. If anyone is familiar with it, you drive up, you take your ticket, you go in, when you're leaving, you, you put your ticket in, and you pay for them, it goes by the hour or by the day, or however it works. Our system will be set up basically $5 an hour. It'll run from roughly April 15th through September 15th, which is probably pretty much in conjunction with the way the town operates, and I'd kind of like to work with the town on that, to, you know, stay in line with them and make kind of a smooth transition for them. But, well, hopefully, we can not make everybody angry about this thing. We're going to try to smooth into it pretty smooth. There will be some, some neat points here. Anyone that drives up there will be able to come into our property for 10 minutes, so if you're dropping people off at the, for dropping your beach gear off, or if you had to pick up an order at the restaurant, or anything like that, so everyone comes in as a 10-minute grace period. Anything after 10 minutes will automatically be a $5 charge. The restaurant will, we will give them a 90-minute credit, so if you come in the restaurant, it's 90 minutes, so it doesn't, and I'm sure that 90 minutes is gracious plenty for that. And then anyone that wants to stay all day, they'll get a credit of the 90 minutes, so it all, it's all going to work out pretty well. Fishmen, they won't pay at a park, of course, they'll get a credit, and our, then with the campgrounds, they'll have a card, so whenever they can get it out, so... The lady at the airport, her name is Amy, she was in charge of their system, and she suggested three gates. The reason why is because of in case something hiccups, especially on the exits. So we decided to try, or to put in three gates, one entrance gate and two exit gates. That way, in case one of the exit gates hiccups or breaks down temporarily, we can keep running everybody through the other gate, so, excuse me, it would keep things going. In doing that, we're going to have to ask you guys to, for a little bit of assistance in this, we're going to have to widen our entrance somewhat, not much, just a little bit, and if, in that case, we want to move the, shift the bicycle path over into my property and, and give us the proper entrance footage that, you know, for fire and so on, and all that's been taken into consideration. So what I'm asking for is basically your permission to give you an easement, and I will pay for doing all the work, you know, the repaving and, and anything like that, so we'll go from there. That's about it, that's about the gist of it, I think you probably have it all in your packages.
Thank you, sir. Any questions from the board for Mr. Stanley?
Mike, will emergency vehicles have access?
I'm sorry?
Would they have a card for access, emergency vehicles?
Emergency vehicles, well, from our discussions with Parking Box, there, there's, there's a system that when they, when they did their loud beep or their siren, it'll, it'll open up. I mean, it wouldn't be just one gate, it would be all the gates. So, you know, if they, if one of them's blocked out, they can go around another and hit the gate, and it'll, it'll pop open. There's also, I guess, options for Knox boxes or any of those types of other things. The technology's there, it's whatever it takes to get it right.
And I'm going to say that I think this is a good idea, because I've seen in the summertime the traffic back up down Emerald Drive, where people are waiting for someone to leave a parking space, and meanwhile, it's stagnant on Emerald Drive, and at least now, they're going to get a message that the parking lot's full, here's how many lots are available, or spaces are available, so I think it's going to be an asset that it'll help relieve some of that, that traffic congestion and flow on Emerald Drive.
The technology's there, we can, we've discussed it, we can be... The technology's there, we can, we've discussed it, we can beam, there was, when the, when the, when the system knows that it's full, we can beam a signal down to the end of the street, and we were talking about possibly making it a little bit delayed, because, you know, one leaves, one, one comes in, one leaves, and so we don't want to blink in red, green, red, green out at the end of the street, you know, but we give it like a little bit of a time buffer there, so if it's full, it'll be full for like five more minutes or something, so that it doesn't flash back and forth, you know, 'cause it is an in-and-out gate, it really is. I remember this year, I rode my bicycle, I had rode the little electric bike, finding parking spaces, and my wife would tell me, I'd tell her, "It's 103, 104," and we were, we were full, we were full like for 30 minutes, and, you know, there comes times like that 2, 3 o'clock in the afternoon, where it really, 1 o'clock, 2 o'clock in the afternoon, it really locks up. And so I said, "Well, I'm gonna ride a bike down the end of the street, see where it is." The cars, of course, were always lined all the way to Emerald Drive, and I said, "Well, I wonder how far they're, they're going." And I looked west on Emerald Drive, and as far as I could see, there were cars trying to come to our place. So this is what kind of, this is how popular, not just us, but the town is getting, so we're, we're really feeling the heat.
And the businesses past Bog Inlet Drive were suffering too. I talked to Shepherd's Barbecue there and a couple of other businesses there, and because the people couldn't get down the road, they, they said their business suffered, because people were turning around because of the traffic, so I think this will help.
Right. Well, we sure, we can try it. I mean, I can't make any more parking spaces, but, you know, we can, we can do the best we can, and my goal still is to accommodate my fishermen and, of course, our restaurant people, and that's a revolving door, that's pretty good, they're in and out all the time. I think in the long run, with season passes, people buy season passes, it's kind of like a key to the city, at that point, you'll be able to come in, you can do anything you want, anytime you want. And it's just, you know, it's a $300 charge, it's not that bad, 'cause you can fish with it, you can do all kinds of stuff. So we've got some good options, and I, and I think we leave it, leave it open enough for everyone to kind of feel like they can breathe. If it's a local, they make electric bikes all day long, and electric bike is awesome. We want, we will allow motorcycles and bicycles to come in, no charge, and enjoy the place. So we're not, it's not that we're trying to throttle back people, it's just that 5,000-pound piece of metal that you're dragging with you is what I gotta worry about. That's where I have to accommodate.
And golf cart parking's gonna be?
Golf cart parking's gonna be the same, because they'll be the same as cars, because they will, they can either take, take up on top of the, of the sand dune, where we have our little golf cart parking area, or they can take a parking space. It won't matter, each space is $5 an hour regardless of who's in it, so.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Any other questions from the board, from Mr. Stanley? All right. The commercial site plan application was recommended for approval by the planning board, so I'll leave it to the board to make a motion one way or the other.
I'll make a motion to approve it as recommended by the planning board.
All right, motion's on the floor, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, no opposed, motion is carried. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much, we'll, we'll make you proud of us up front.
Sure you will.
Thank you, Mike.
Good luck, y'all.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Mike.
All right. Next item up, number 13, would be the approval of the 2024 Emerald Isle Board Meeting Schedule. The board's asked to vote on the schedule. Traditionally, the town has held their Board of Commissioner meetings on the second Tuesday of the month at 6:00 p.m. Unless there are discussion, I'll ask for a motion on that.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the 2024 Board of Commissioners Meeting Schedule.
All right, motion's on the floor, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion is carried, thank you. All right, item number 14 will be our public comment. Anyone that signed up when they came in will have three minutes to address the board with any comments, concerns, congratulations, anything like that. If you would, please, try to keep your comments to three minutes, out of respect for any other speakers. If you didn't sign up, or, I know it's a busy room, if you didn't sign up and you wanna speak, don't worry, once we've gone through everybody that signed up, by show of hand, we'll give you your time as well. When you hit the three-minute mark, I'll hold up my trusty little flag there, you don't have to stop mid-sentence, obviously, but out of respect to speakers behind you, if you would finish your thoughts, and we'll move forward. So with that, Sarah Lash for our first speaker.
Ann Marie Wooton.
All right. Good evening, Ms. Wooton.
It won't take me three minutes.
Let's make sure that's, yeah, there's a switch on the bottom there, so I just, so everyone at home can hear you too. These things are kinda, kinda finicky.
No?
There it is.
Okay. It won't take me three minutes, but I just wanted to thank the previous and new commissioners as well, from a town that dare, that cares deeply about where we live and who we are. We greatly appreciate your service, and I could not have said anything more eloquent than our mayor, but thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
All right, that's all that was on the sign-up sheet. Are there any other public speakers that wish to speak, that didn't get a chance to sign up? All right, we will move forward with our comments from Town Clerk, Attorney, and Manager. Sarah, any comments?
No comment.
You're gonna surprise me one day.
I know, right?
Town Attorney, Ms. Paulbaum?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Mrs. Zapp?
Yes, sir, I'll keep it brief. Echoing Mrs. Wooton, thank you to our exiting commissioners, welcome to our new board, welcome to each of our new commissioners, and congratulations, Mayor Pro Tem Taylor, on your election here this evening. I wanted to share with the board and the community that our street paving projects continue, and I'll rattle off the current Powellville streets that are going to either be milled and paved, or have recently received that resurfacing over the last week to two. So those streets in Emerald Isle include Ring Street, Old Ferry, Malane, Connie, 23rd, 17th, and Second Street are all on the list to be replaced and repaired. In addition, wanted to give you a brief update that the work on Bog Inlet has been completed. Those are brand-new curb and gutters, new driveway aprons to meet a 10% grade of entrance, as well as a brand-new culvert replacement on Bog Inlet. Cedar Street residents, please bear with us, we're nearly finished, we're close to the finish line, and the folks on Cedar have been absolutely gracious, and we want to thank our team from Thomas Simpson Construction, who's been extremely amenable and helpful in dealing with our local constituents. So those two projects also have received almost $430,000 worth of work in the asphalt. Bog Inlet is complete, and there will be a complete replacement of the entire work zone on Cedar that will take place, hopefully, between today and the New Year holiday. And for those of you that are on Old Ferry, please be aware that we'll begin construction and work there immediately following New Year, so the week of January 2nd, there will be some disruption and a culvert replacement there. If there's any questions from the new board or the mayor, I'd be glad to answer them, just wanted to give you an update on some of our major construction projects.
Thank you, sir. All right, we'll move to comments from our new Board of Commissioners, start with Commissioner Taylor.
I just wanna congratulate all the new commissioners here and the new board, I look forward to working with each of you, and I think we got a sound board up here once again, and congratulations to the other commissioners that have now retired, and it was my honor and privilege to work with each one of them, so I'm really excited about that, and thanks for the opportunity to try a different seat here and try this mayor pro temp out a little bit, so I'm excited about that. And I just wanna bring one thing up, too.
What, sir?
Didn't know I was gonna fly over, that's pretty cool. We're, there's a group out there that's working now very hard, and it's a perfect time to talk about is our Christmas ornaments outside on the tree poles and stuff like that, and I just wanted to bring it publicly to the attention now with the new board sitting up here. Outgoing Commissioner Finch is heading up a group, and they're trying to replace all our ornaments that are sitting out on the poles, and when you drive around, you know, you get a chance to take a look at them and see what they're like and all that good stuff. They're trying to raise private funds up, and then I'm gonna hope in the springtime, get the support of the rest of the board, and we're gonna try to match those funds, but I just wanna kind of put that out there a little bit, that we're looking for some new Christmas ornaments next year when the budget goals come around, and I'm gonna hopefully get the support of my fellow commissioners up here, and we'll try to make it a little bit brighter, a little bit shiner next Christmas for you with those ornaments out there. And if you're feeling so lucky and nice and giving, that board that's volunteer to raise funds has left some certificates on the table, I think, back there in the back area, and they'll be happy to assist you in that information there. Once again, I look forward to the next two years that I'll be sitting up here, and thank you for the trust in putting me in the seat, I really do appreciate it, and once again, thank you for, looking forward to working with each one of you. Thank you very much.
Thanks, sir. Commissioner Wooton?
Thanks. I'd also like to thank the citizens, the folks that gave us enough trust to give us the opportunity to serve you, we intend to do you proud, and congratulations to my colleagues, I look forward to working with you. I very much support what Steve's doing with the Christmas ornaments, I think that's a great cause, this town looks great around Christmas time, and I think there's a lot that we could do to make it look even nicer. Mr. Mayor, I would like to ask if we, when we have a month to think about it, before we get to January 9th, when I go to work, if I'm in a meeting with my boss, I usually ask to see what it is that she wants before we open up the meeting, and I think that works real well for me at work where I, you know, my regular job. So I would love to see if we could move the public comment section of this meeting up towards the front of the meeting, and maybe find a way to tie the opportunity to comment to specific agenda items. I know the town did it for many years and with great success, but I think it's real important, and one of the things that I talked to a lot of people about over the last couple of months is having that ability to communicate with the town, and I think the quick, the closer we can put their input to the discussions and decisions we're making, the better it will be for all of us, and it'll make it a little bit easier for us to serve you. Beyond that, this the last meeting before so, so Merry Christmas, everybody, and thank you very much.
Thanks, sir. Commissioner Brownlow?
Thanks, Mayor. By the grace of God, I'm sitting here today in this commissioner's seat, and I'm still trying to take it in. It's such a blessing to be in this seat at this town that I love and cherish so much, 'cause I'm an Emerald Isle native, I'm a long-term, I mean, lifelong resident, grew up here, I don't have any other home, this is it. So that's why my impetus to run for office is to make sure, to preserve what we love about Emerald Isle. And that was only possible, and that's why I wanna give thanks to the preceding commissioners, all those in the years before, also that have sat in this seat and kept this a nice place to be and a great place to live and grow up. I'd like to thank the, my family especially for supporting me, 'cause I wouldn't have done that unless I had their support and blessing, and I'd like to thank my supporters in the campaign, my volunteers, I mean, incredible people. And I went to over 900 properties during my campaign, doing a grassroots campaign style, I visited over 900 properties, and you figure if there's at least two people in each home, that's 800, 1,800 people approximately that I, I listened to. I learned to be a listening campaign. And so I got a whole list at home of stuff that you folks told me that you liked to see implemented and done in this town. Some of it's kind of crazy, and, you know, maybe, maybe not, but some of it, they're definitely recurring themes that I heard from 99% of you, out of all these people I went to. And it is my intention to, my promise, to implement that to the best of my ability, hopefully with the support of the staff and commissioners and your support. And, 'cause one of my campaign goals was to engage citizens, and so I'm anticipating that you're gonna be participating in this, with us. I value your feedback, I value what you have to say, and, and I'm listening, and if I visit one of your properties before, you know that I'm an attentive listener, and then I'm also a doer, I just don't listen to you and go on, I will try to implement that to the best of my ability. So I heard you say that you wanted me to be your advocate and your voice in this town, I don't take that lightly, and so I intend to do that to the absolute best of my ability. This is more than just a place on a map, more than just a place that was on a TV show, this is our community, this is our home, this is my home, where I raised my family, you know, my wife's living here now, we had two sons raised here, second-generation Emerald Isle natives, and now my grandson, you know, with my daughter-in-law, and his third-generation Emerald Isle native. I wanna make sure that we preserve what we love for them and for other future generation people to become in Emerald Isle. So thank you for your trust and your confidence and your support, I thank all the voters, and God bless you folks, and God bless this beautiful town we live in, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Saug?
Wow, how things have changed. Never thought I'd be sitting in this seat, I'm so glad that you guys entrusted me to serve you. As a kid growing up here, I think of Mike Stanley riding around on the pier parking lot, he's called my parents and told them I was in trouble. One of my first jobs was on Parks and Recs mowing grass for Mr. Penry when Miss, when Miss Alicia was here, I think I was 14 or 15. It's an honor to serve you, I think this board is gonna do a great job, I think we all bring the necessary attributes to the table to make this place really glow like it doesn't, and we all, we all love this place, and we're here to serve you. I wanna hear from you, I've got a restaurant right down the road, the Village Market, you're more than welcome to come yell at me there, you're more than welcome to come discuss with me there, you're more than welcome to just come in and have a cup of coffee with me, I wanna hear from you, that's how we get problems solved. So I wish all of you guys a Merry Christmas, and I'm looking forward to seeing all these familiar faces in January.
Thanks, sir. Commissioner Sanderson?
Thank you, Mayor Highland. I'd like to thank my colleagues up here, I look forward to working with each one of you, because I know that all of us have the best for Emerald Isle in our hearts, there's no question in my mind, and I appreciate the citizens who have entrusted us to fulfill what you want to see in this town, and I hope that you, that we can execute that well for you, and I thank you all. I have a genuine love for Emerald Isle, spent almost 33 years as a public employee, and I'm happy to be sitting up here continuing to serve Emerald Isle. Merry Christmas.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll keep it short, I can get long-winded, as most of you know, but, again, thank you and congratulations to our outgoing board. Like I said, I've learned so much from you, and I know I'll continue to learn from you going forward. Congratulations to our newly elected officials, like I said, it's a huge step to put yourself out there and to, and to make that sacrifice, but you wouldn't do it if you didn't love the town, if you didn't love the people of the town, and God bless your families, they, you will need their support, and I know you all have great people behind you, and that is a big deal, and it takes that every day. I look forward to getting to know you all better, I look forward to you all getting to know our town even better than you already do, and keep the interest of the town as a whole, first and foremost, you'll be just fine. That's about all I've gotta say, I won't see you all before Christmas, so love on your families, love on your friends, love on your town, don't take anything for granted, and I appreciate you all. With that, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Let's adjourn.
All right, the motion's on the floor, all in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everybody.